Also be audibly or visually recording this meeting. Please ensure that any cell phones or electronic devices are turned to a non-audible function. Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have an added item of correspondence, 5.1K, respecting a stop control at Green Road and Francis Avenue. And as well as the delegation listed as 6.2, Lorraine Colarco is unable to attend the meeting, so she will not be presenting today.
Thank you. May I please have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor Connelly. All those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 18th, 2017, meeting of the Public Works Committee, moved by Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Jackson? All those in favor? Item 4.1 is a delegation request from Sarah Wary Poljanski to speak to item 6.2 on today's agenda. May please have a motion to approve this request. Counselor Jackson, Counselor Connelly, all those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Item 5.1 is Report 17-001G, an intersection control list. As the committee clerk indicated at the start of the meeting, correspondence respecting item K of this report has been received. What is the wish of the committee in dealing with this matter? Somebody tinked a glass. Counselor Pearson?
Madam Chair, thank you very much, and good morning to my colleagues this morning, as I'm not a member on Planning Committee or in Public Works. I certainly would appreciate and request that the two requests that I have this morning for all waste stops in Stormy Creek Ward 10, being Francis and Green Road and Hemlock and Ellington, be approved. I've worked very diligently on both of these locations. These have not been one-offs of, you know, just put it in. I've worked many years in making sure that the need is there and that we address the concerns of the neighborhood. So I would certainly appreciate my colleagues' please supporting both stop, all waste stop locations this morning.
Thank you. Okay, so what is the wish of the committee? You're moving 5.1, moved by Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Connelly. All those in favor?
Carried.
Any opposed? Thank you. May I please have a motion to, where are we here? No. Item 5.2 is Report PW 17081, respecting the Mathers Drive Stream Class EA and implementation of protection works. May please have a motion to approve the report? Counselor Jackson? Seconded by Counselor Connelly. All those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Thank you. Item 5.3 is the minutes of the Waste Management Advisory Committee dated May 31st, 2017. May I please have a motion to receive the minutes? Counselor Connelly, Counselor Collins, all those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Thank you. Item 5.4 is Report PW 17084, respecting new municipal facility and construction costs. May please have a motion to receive the report? Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Marula? All those in favor?
Carried.
Item 6.1 is a delegation from Vanessa Reponey and Dani Lake with the Canadian Federation of Engineering Students with a request for the use of an HSR bus during an upcoming conference. Vanessa and Dani, could you introduce yourselves and, carry on. The podium is yours.
Hello, everyone. My name is Vanessa Reponey.
Yeah, and my name is Dani. So first of all, we'd really like to thank everyone here for having us to speak this morning in front of the Public Works Committee and to the public. So we're here today on behalf of the Canadian Federation of Engineering Students, CFES, Conference on Diversity in Engineering, CDE. So the CFES is a national organization made up of 51 engineering student societies from across the country. And the CFES puts on various services for its members throughout the year, and one of those is conferences. So this fall, in November 10th to 13th, the Third Annual Conference on Diversity in Engineering is being held by McMaster University, both up at the university and in downtown Hamilton.
So Dani and I have been a member of the organizing committee for the last two years planning this conference, and we're here, we've been focusing on the Hamilton element a lot. So we're actually staying at the Sheridan Hotel with all of our delegation of 150 engineering students from across Canada, and the rest of the conference is taking place at McMaster. We're also having like a round robin food event where we're highlighting 10 different local Hamilton restaurants, kind of along James Street downtown. So we're really highlighting the fact that we are in Hamilton, and we really want to highlight this to these Canadian students that are coming all the way from PEI to Victoria that have maybe not necessarily been to Hamilton before. So this conference is focusing a lot on diversity, so we're highlighting mental health issues, LGBTQ issues, talking about racism and sexism in the workplace, and all within a professional context. So these are really important conversations to be having, and we're really honored to be hosting this conference for the third time ever at Hamilton, or in Hamilton at McMaster. And we have also, McMaster has not hosted such a national conference from the CFES in at least five years, so this is a really exciting opportunity.
Yes, so why we're here today and what we're here to ask for is, as we mentioned, we're staying at the Sheridan, and a lot of our sessions are happening actually up at McMaster. So we need some way to go from point A to point B. So our original plan was to charter school buses, but then we also heard that we could charter the Hamilton buses. So we looked into that, we did some research, and the cost was about $1,800, which unfortunately came at more than the school buses, so looking at our budget, it was just sort of the more economical choice. But we've noticed that last year when McGill University hosted the conference, the city of Montreal sponsored banners that were put up all around the city highlighting the conference. At other conferences we've been to, different cities have sponsored buses for transportation, and we know here in Hamilton that during the Engineering Welcome Week, that the buses used for the Bus Pull charity event are sponsored as well. So we're here today to ask for some help in covering the cost of chartering the HSR buses to help highlight that, another awesome element of Hamilton.
Thank you. So questions from the committee. Counselor Marula?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, how much are you looking for exactly? So how much do you have budgeted to date?
So in the 6.1 attachment, I believe it's exactly $1,821?
That's the total cost, right?
That's the total cost of all the buses.
How much do you have as budgeted already? None of it?
Oh, budgeted for the...
Do you have any money at all towards that $1,800?
For the school buses?
Yes, so we currently, we budgeted for about the cost of the school buses, which was about $1,500, so...
So you only are looking for $300?
Well, we are, we are curious if it's possible to get it sponsored. Oh, we also forgot to mention, this would be considered a sponsorship from the city of Hamilton at the bronze level in the event that the full $1,800 is covered, which would therefore give perks to the city of Hamilton getting like logos and ability to network with the delegates. If the $300 option is what you're more comfortable with, then we, that unfortunately wouldn't classify as a sponsorship level to that extent, but that would also be...
I guess if you have the money sitting in the bank already, the $1,500, what would you do with that money?
Yes, so one of the primary things would be, some of it would be to upgrade just other components of our conference. So we have the hotel, but we also have meals, and one, another big thing is getting in more speakers, stuff like that. It'd be more to upgrade other parts of our conference.
So it'll be applied to other conference costs?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I have no problem covering the $1,800. I'll move that accordingly as a sponsor, and so I can get a second here for that.
If we donate $1,800 to this conference, would you agree to at least apply for a job here at the city of Hamilton after you graduate? You seem like two very ambitious people who aren't afraid to get before our council, so...
We will, we will put the applications out to our whole team, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Jackson?
Madam Chair, my question would just be for the Director of the HSR, but maybe I'll wait till after the delegates are over then. So just thank Vanessa and Dani for coming in, and I just, I don't have a problem with Counselor Marula's motion, but I just want to ask the Director a question. Thank you. So put me on the list and once the delegation's received. Thank you.
I'll do that. So could I have a motion to receive the delegation? Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Connelly? Just receiving the delegation. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And now Counselor Marula has a motion, so the motion is on the floor to, to sponsor in the amount of the $1,800 plus that they need.
The total amount as requested.
Yep. And seconded by Counselor Ferguson. And so Counselor Jackson, you have a question for staff?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Through you to the new Director, Debbie Delavadove. Debbie, either in your former career in Halton and/or since you've been here about a year, is this precedent-setting, or has the HSR, I'm trying to recollect in my own time here, is this something that the HSR has done in the past? Obviously, it's not for a private business, it's for a university, it's for a conference in Hamilton, elevate the university. We do a lot of partnerships with them as a city, so in your short time here, Debbie, or in your past career, can you just maybe give me a little, raise my comfort level that with council support, everything would be kosher? Through you, Madam Chair, to Debbie, please.
Through the chair. I do understand that in the past, HSR has provided services of this kind for other events. Back in 2014, I believe, we supported the Engineering Students Week at McMaster as well.
That's good to know, then. And obviously, whatever the sponsorship, everything will be done through our finance department, Madam Chair, just to keep everything above board. And as a former Mac grad, obviously, I'm very proud and happy to support the two ladies and the conference that's come here today, and Counselor Marula's motion. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Thank you. Item 6.2 are delegations respecting safety concerns and the installation of barriers on the Link and the Red Hill Valley Parkway. If the committee is in agreement, I will take a motion at the conclusion of the delegations for a motion to receive all of them. Agreed at one time. I'll call on our first speaker, but before I do, I just want to remind you that you have five minutes, and it will be limited to five minutes as a delegation, and then committee has time to ask you some questions. So if I could call on Samantha White to please come forward. There she comes.
There's that, oh, we need something, some of the names are missing.
If you can just make your way to the podium.
I'm not Samantha White.
Oh.
So I'm just saying, there are some names that are missing that got...
Oh, well, that's a different story. So is Samantha White here?
No.
Okay, so I'm just going to leave her on the list, and we'll, I'll ask again. You need to talk to the clerk about the names that you feel are missing. Meanwhile, I'm just going to move forward. Speaker number two is Kim Lackey. Welcome, Kim. So which one of you is Kim? Your Kim? Your Kim?
I'm Kim Lackey.
I'm sorry?
I'm Kim Lackey. My name is Kim Lackey.
Kim Lackey. Okay, Kim. And so is the lady with you going to speak as part of your delegation?
She'll be speaking after me, I believe.
No, well, we, so the way it works here is, we have a list of who's speaking, and then that person comes to the podium and speaks, unless you're both there for one delegation, which is one five-minute slot.
Right.
So, but I, I have to defer to Madam Clerk to see what she would like to do about that, so just give me one minute. So Madam Clerk, what are we doing?
We have one.
Okay, and so is, so I have two people as speakers, number three. So I'm fitting her in there before them?
Yes.
Kim and Trina.
And Trina? Okay. Kim?
Yes. Hi, my name is Kim Lackey. I have a son named Aaron Hare. It has been three years, this Monday, October 23rd, I am still in disbelief. The morning was no different from any other day with Aaron, and off he went to school that day. Aaron was going to pick up a friend at Lyme Ridge Mall, Hamilton. Aaron was just a thoughtful friend, but kind, if he needed him to, he would drop whatever he was doing to help anyone.
Excuse me, Madam Chairman. Kim, can you get right up to the microphone? We're having trouble hearing you.
Like here?
Just, just get right in front of it.
Oh, closer, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. You only gave me five minutes. So he was the kind of friend that would drop whatever he was doing to help anyone. He went to pick up his girlfriend Christine, first then at Garth Gas and got on the 403, then off Branch Street in Burlington. Well, he never made it to Lyme Ridge. My son's car was in the slow lane and doing the proper speed limit, and for some reason overcorrected on the eastbound at Garth Street overpass and overcrossed the grass median that made his gargoir airborne onto the oncoming traffic on the Link and Alexander Parkway, and they were killed instantly. Aaron and Christine are someone who had the ability to put a smile on his sad face. They always would say the right thing. Say the right thing and to, to that someone at the right time, you couldn't help but laugh. Aaron loved to play the drums. He truly is someone that is kind, loving, and very funny, young handsome man. He will be forever 18. I live every day thinking, oh, my life, Aaron's brother Aiden and his father, family, and friends have changed forever. I have to keep going and have a voice and looking forward to some changes on these roads. Two beautiful lives that were taken too soon. Just look around at everyone who is here that drive on the Link or will be driving on the Red Hill in the 403. The pain of the loss of my son Aaron, never coming home again, is just like the other four families here today. We all believe that this could have all been easily avoided if they hit a barrier, not into oncoming traffic and getting T-boned. Aaron was only doing a good thing, as always, him and his love of his life, Christine. My point is that when they are crossing over to oncoming traffic, this is when death comes instead of just maybe injuries. There has been eight or more people since 2015 that has crossed over. All these lives that have crossed over have many friends and family and support, as you can see here today. The barriers will save lives. I have two questions. One, back in Thursday, May 21st, 2015, meeting at City Hall, the city was already studying how to stop the concerning number of the median crossing crashes on the Link when two young women on the Red Hill did the same as Aaron. This spurred new calls for safety guardrails. How do you all have to cross over for the city to make these changes? As per the news when Aaron and Christine had the accident, they said that they were six and seven. I quote that comment regarding the cost of the barriers of the tune of $3 million. We all know that it would be the cheapest, fastest, and safest to just put the barriers up. My second question is, should we do a petition? And thank you for taking the time and listening. I'm looking forward to the new changes on the Link and the Red Hill.
Lori? So I'm going to go to questions for Kim and then have Trina. Is that okay? Is that right? All right. Kim, I know this is very difficult for you, and it's difficult to listen to because it is such an emotional thing. So we do typically ask questions after. I'm going to ask if anyone has any questions for you, and then you're welcome to go and sit down when they're done, okay? If you want to.
Thank you.
Any questions for Kim? Okay, Kim, you can sit down if you want, or you can stay there with Trina.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Trina Williams?
Mm-hmm.
Floor is yours.
Okay. My name is Trina Williams. I'm the mother of Christine Louise Mae Williams. Christine was born September 11th, 1995, weighing seven pounds, 10 ounces. She had an amazing zest for life and always had a positive attitude. She was a very good student and always worked hard and had a very sweet laugh to go with her bubbly personality. She wanted to travel the world and was working on her cosmetology certificate. She was never afraid to do anything and always worked her hardest to be the best in her field. She was working at our local shopper's drug mart as a cosmetician and planning her future for college and planning the future with the love of her life, Aaron Hare, Kim's son. They were waiting, they were waiting for him to finish up his high school credits so they could go to college together. On October 23rd, 2014, it was a normal day for us. She was waiting at home for Aaron, and I was getting ready for work. She came into my room and said she was going with Aaron to pick up a friend, and off they went together. They were two wonderful young adults and were looking forward to their future together. I would never see her again. On October 23rd, 2014, I came home from work at approximately 6:00 PM. As I walk, as I was walking into my house, I saw some police cars and I got nervous. As I walked in my front door, I saw a police officer standing in the hallway, and he put his head down and did not want to make eye contact with me. As I continued into my home, I saw my husband with tears in his eyes, and I right away knew and thought to myself, oh my God, which one is it? One of my children is gone. Which one is it? I then saw my two sons coming down the stairs, and I knew at that point it was my beautiful baby girl, Christine. As they escorted me into the living room, I dropped to the floor in tears, screaming, oh my God, no, as they said simply that Aaron and Christine were in a collision on the Lincoln Alexander Parkway and simply said they were both gone. Nothing prepared me for that. Then all the questions started going through my head. Why? Why? There is, there has been and will be a lot of talk about statistics of accidents and crossovers on the Red Hill and the Link, and that is a very, and that is a necessary and needs to be confronted. I really wanted everyone to understand that the statistics are, of course, very important, but I also want everyone to know that your statistics are our children, my daughter. I think everyone tends to forget that these people were living, breathing, human beings. My daughter has a sister who is 27 now, is married with an infant son of her own. She also has an older brother who is 26 and a younger brother who is 20, who misses her dearly. She is, she has a daughter, a sister, an aunt, a niece, a cousin, a grandchild to so many family members who miss her. She had an amazing life that was cut too short due to, in my opinion, a lack of clear safety measures that could have prevented a horrible crossover and fatal accident. This could have been prevented by some kind of barrier. I also have heard on the news that putting up barriers may stop crossovers, but that the cars could still bounce back in traffic and hit, get be hit anyways. But bouncing back would have a far less impact than two cars hitting each other at 90 kilometers an hour. I keep hearing talk of distracted driving, impaired driving, speeding, and although I agree that that does happen, it didn't happen in our case. All we really know is the brakes were applied very hard, and they went across to all lanes of traffic. As soon as they hit the curb, they were airborne, and at that point had no control. Had they hit a barrier, they would have at least stayed on their side of the link. There will always be speeders, drunk drivers, people on their phones, but this does not mean that people don't have the right to be safe on these roads. We will not prevent accidents all the time, but we can prevent crossovers, and hopefully this will lessen the amount of deaths that could occur. I am here fighting for my child's memory to stop any more census crossovers that can cause serious injuries or worse death. In conclusion, please remember these statistics. You talk about it, we're living, breathing, human beings that had families who loved them, that now spend the rest of their lives in the most horrific grief and turmoil you can imagine. I don't want others to live through this pain. Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair. First of all, Trina and Kim, incredible courage for both of you to come forward in light of your loss and to appear in a public forum like this. That's never easy, and especially under your very tragic circumstances, it's even incredibly more courageous, so I admire both of you for being here to share your stories.
Thank you.
God rest the soul of both, of both Aaron and Christine. Can I just ask if either one of you are comfortable, Madam Chair, in possibly explaining? Do you feel that the entire Link from the 403 then down the Red Hill all the way over to the QE, do you feel that theoretically, the whole parkways, the two parkways should have barriers, in your opinions? Or are there certain sections that you would say, like where sadly and tragically Aaron and Christine crossed over and were killed? Are there certain sections that you would say definitely at least deserve a priority? Madam Chair, if either Kim or Trina are possibly comfortable in trying to answer that question, please?
I personally, myself, think it really does need to be the whole way, because there's, like ours was at Garth, but I know others were more on the Red Hill and at different, what do you call, exits. So I personally think that in the end, you don't know where the accidents are going to happen, and it's the crossovers that, to me, kill people. So I personally think that it should be along the entire road.
And usually when, usually when people are driving and you see somebody doing something that's different in front of you, you're going to go on your brakes or slow down and let the car do whatever it's doing. But in Aaron and Christine's situation, the curb is only this high, so once you go over it, there's no way that you can do anything. The Red Hill has this. Well, it's pretty much the same thing. So when this happened, and it's just, yeah, make the curb bigger, I don't know, something. Like, this is just crazy.
Thank you very much for, for your thoughts and opinion on that. I know traveling in different parts of Ontario, Madam Chair, some of the 400 series highways, some have barriers, some have, I'll say, wider grass medians than the Red Hill and the Link do, but seems to be a combination of both. But I suspect after this, we'll hopefully send the, all the delegation comments to our staff and to take it under advisement, hopefully that they'll report back. But thank you again for your courage coming forward, and God rest your two children's souls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to go back and see if Samantha White is in the room. Is Samantha here? Okay, I'll keep coming back to her. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. My name is Leonie DeGraff Hastings, and this is my husband, Corey Hastings. Good morning, councilors, Public Works Committee, and members of the concerned public. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this morning about an issue that is of the utmost importance to our families, which is the installation of barriers on the Red Hill Expressway and the Lincoln Alexander Parkway for the safety of all who travel on them. We understand it's not likely that any of you have lost a child on these roadways, but We shudder at the memory of police officers attending our homes to deliver the news that our babies would not be coming home, that we would not see them later, like they said when we kissed them goodbye earlier that day. We pray that none of you ever lose a loved one, especially a child, on the Red Hill or the Link. But if barriers are not installed, that continues to be a risk, and that is why we are here today. We're here today speaking for our 20-year-old daughter, Jordan Hastings, who lost her life on May 5th, 2015. She was doing a favor for her best friend, Olivia Smazarsky. Without alcohol, drugs, texting, mechanical failure, or speed as contributing factors, Jordan lost control of her vehicle while downbound on the Red Hill, appeared to overcorrect, which slid her vehicle into the dewy grass median, and continued to slide into oncoming traffic, where they were hit at full speed by an innocent driver headed up the Red Hill Expressway. In an instant, both girls died, and hundreds of lives would forever be affected. The outbound driver involved will likely never be the same from the trauma. As well as the good citizens who were first upon the scene of the accident prayed over our girls and called EMS. They will always be traumatized by the memories of what they saw that night. For our own family, two brothers and a sister now have to live the rest of their lives without their sister, their companion, who they looked up to and whose souls were connected. Two parents and two stepparents will forever feel the deepest aching void left in our family units from the loss of Jordan. She was our ray of sunshine, and our families will never shine... She was our ray of sunshine and our families will never shine quite as bright as we did when she was alive. Jordan had a future and plans for success. She was advancing from Mohawk to Sheridan College and had just returned from a trip to Amsterdam and Paris with her brother and sister. Her imagination was exploding and her potential was limitless. Jordan had so much to offer the world and would have made a difference if her life wasn't cut so short. We feel very passionately that Jordan and Olivia would both be alive today if there had been center barriers on the Red Hill Expressway to contain Jordan's accident to her side of the roadway. The only reason both girls died was because they were hit by an equal and opposing force from the other side of the expressway. There were no witnesses to Jordan's loss of control or fatal crash, which means if she had been contained to the downbound lanes, no other vehicles would have been involved. Motorists coming up to the scene would have had time to react to what was ahead instead of being blinded by a flash of sparks from the other side of the expressway with no other option but a collision. Jordan and Olivia died at a collision hotspot between Green Hill Avenue and King Street, as shown in this diagram. Seven deaths on just the Red Hill in the past five years. Seven. As a result of Jordan's accident and the senseless loss of two lives, Councilor Sam Marula commissioned a safety study of the Red Hill Expressway and the Lincoln Alexander Parkway. The report, which was released in December 2015, listed a number of recommendations to improve the safety for motorists on both roadways, which include installing milled shoulder rumble strips, improving signage, and erecting attention cable median barrier system. That same report found that crashes are on the rise when the road is wet. Therefore, the city conducted friction tests on the road but won't release those results. The statement made by Superintendent David Ferguson in the July 2017 Hamilton Spectator article, quote, "At this time, barriers are not being considered," end quote, is a direct contradiction to the study recommendations and a slap in the face for us parents. What will it take for barriers to be considered? Will it take one of you losing a child or a loved one on the roadways before you do something? Here we are approaching another season of bad weather and almost two years since those recommendations were released and we still don't have barriers on the Red Hill and the Link. This infuriates us and we demand the City of Hamilton prioritizes safety and finds the funds to install barriers on these roadways before the end of 2017, before any other families suffer the same tragic loss as we have. We are tired of the delays and the excuses. 994 accidents and 11 people have died in only the past five years on these two roadways. You all have the power to make a difference. You have the power to improve safety and save lives by installing barriers. In closing, our intention is not to blame anyone for the lack of barriers in the past. We can't bring our children back. But I would like to leave you with the wise words of Maya Angelou to think about after you leave here today. Do the best you can until you know better. Then, when you know better, do better. And that's what we're asking of you today. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And, Madam Chair, I'm very sorry for your loss. It had to be difficult to... I remember clearly when it happened. I have three daughters myself, so I can only imagine what you're going through. And as chairman of the Police Services Board, I know that it caused some trauma to the officers who had to investigate it also.
Thank you.
It wasn't a good scene. One question I've never asked, though, were the girls wearing seat belts?
Yes, they were.
But the driver in the other direction wasn't injured?
No, the driver that was headed up the Red Hill, apparently she just saw sparks and then it went black for her. When she became conscious, the front of her Honda CRV was gone, but the airbags were imploded.
Did your girl's airbags implode?
Yes. Yes, all the airbags in the vehicle imploded.
Do you know what the cause of death was? Did the coroner's ever share that with you?
Their necks were broken.
Okay, so with the impact, those airbags didn't prevent that?
No, I think it was, you know, she was sliding and slid through the dewy grass and it was the impact of the inbound vehicle. So when you've got the force of what they were traveling at between 90 and 100 kilometers an hour down, and then you've got the opposing force traveling in that same speed up, now you've got a 200 kilometer an hour impact as opposed to if everyone was traveling in the same direction. You've got that same trajectory working for you as opposed to opposing forces.
So as parents, as you mentioned, you were satisfied with the safety equipment of the vehicle?
Yes, there was, you know, an investigation or they did inspect the vehicle and they said that there wasn't any mechanical failure involved.
I can assure you, there was a very extensive investigation of that collision because anytime you have a fatality, it's terrible. It's a very serious matter. Okay, thanks for having the courage for coming out today.
Thank you.
Counselor Jackson.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Hastings, as well, for your courage for coming out. Are you speaking as well on behalf of Olivia's family or do they happen to be here as well today?
Olivia's family is here in support today, so they weren't able to speak. But yes, I mean, both girls were joined at the hip in life and as angels now too, so...
Very sorry and God rest both their souls too. Question two, if you can comfortably answer, if barriers were to ever be installed, Leonie, is there a certain type of barrier and/or the possible height of the barrier that you would suggest or recommend or from your research, what you have discovered through you, Madam Chair, to either Mr. or Mrs. Hastings?
My request would just be that whatever measures were recommended in the safety report that was released in December 2015, it specifically recommended cable tension barriers. I think anything that would prevent the vehicle from crossing over into the opposing traffic, anything that will slow that vehicle down or prevent it from crossing over, I think is, you know, to the benefit of anyone who travels on there.
Thank you so much for that opinion. And again, I think, Madam Chair, at the end of all the speakers, we need to refer all this to our Director of Engineering and hopefully take under advisement and report back to us on possible options, pros, cons, et cetera, in terms of what the implications might be. But hearing the plea today, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, so here's how it goes. This is a committee meeting where the delegations... Excuse me, I'm just explaining something to you. The delegations come... These are very difficult times for these people and I...
For us.
Of course it is.
The guys are sitting there.
I'm talking about you. So the delegations will be heard and then a recommendation will be made.
Engineer, that's engineer will tell you that.
Okay, so you need to know that this is not a back and forth between the gallery and the committee. I simply gave you some latitude because of the content and the difficulty of all of this for all of you. So the next speaker will be Missy and Susan Scholler. Have I said that correctly? Missy, is Missy here?
Oh, she's there.
Madam Chair, just for the benefit of the gallery, it might be useful to know that I have a resolution that will refer this whole matter to staff, once referred from all the delegations. At that time, the engineers and the traffic experts who are sitting here today will be reviewing this matter and reporting back to us. I believe it's in December and once they gather all their data. So the engineers will take a look at this by all means and so will our traffic experts. Martin White is here, who is our manager of traffic, and so they will expect this to get referred to them. That's what I intend to do once the delegations are finished.
Counselor Conley?
Yeah, I just, I don't think they understand the process. We're going to listen to all the delegations and ask them questions. And then after the delegations are all taken care of, we can ask our staff, and that's engineering, and we ask them questions, and then we make a recommendation and then it goes from there. So we're not trying to ignore you or eliminate you, but we have to listen to all the delegations first and ask them questions, and then we'll ask questions of this committee. We'll ask questions of staff and then there'll be probably a recommendation come forward from there. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, but I just thought that they should understand what our process is.
Thank you, Counselor Conley. And so are you Missy or Susan?
I'm Susan.
Susan, go ahead, Susan.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. On Wednesday, January 25th, 2017, my son, Michael Scholler, left his apartment around 4:30 to go to work in Oakville. It was a trip he would never complete. At approximately 4:50, Michael lost his life on the Red Hill in a median crossover. Although Michael hadn't actually used any substance that day, lab reports indicated that there was some substance in his system and therefore he was declared impaired. However, that does not define the total person that he was. Michael was a loving son, a brother, an uncle, a boyfriend to Sammy Hallock, who was the love of his life, and a friend to many. He loved life and had plans for his future like so many young men of 25. Michael made a mistake and he paid the ultimate price for it, that being his life. I wish to speak about the Red Hill and the fact that in the past five years, there has been twice as many accidents as opposed to the Link. There have been many concerns expressed about the roadway, some of them being the asphalt that seems to make the road more slippery, poor lighting, poor signage, too distant of a merge for the merge lanes. It was originally planned as a wider roadway but was downsized due to costs, poor pavement markings at night. It was never intended to handle the amount of traffic that currently uses the roadway and of course, speed and distracted driving. You can put a multitude of precautions in place, but you are never always going to make the road safe. You are always going to have some accidents. Once all the safety precautions, safety measures and laws have been put in place but have been unable to prevent an accident, then what happens? There is little that can be done to stop an accident once it has started, so all you can hope for is a safe or non-life-threatening outcome for all involved, no matter what side of the road you're on. Fatalities are not an option hoped for. Why is nothing being done to try to help motorists stay safe once an accident starts to happen? Your vehicle is traveling 90 kilometers per hour or more and if they head towards the median, which is flush with little or no curves, no gutters, there is nothing to stop them. The vehicle hits the grass and has the potential to travel right over to the other side of oncoming traffic. There is no protection. The city had two engineering reports from 2015 which provided a list of safety improvement recommendations. It is my understanding that the city has been updating the road, but some of the work done to date has been either smaller or less expensive projects and the 14 short-term recommendations are expected to be completed by the end of the year. The city is also hoping to have the speed limit reduced to 80 kilometers per hour and is investigating whether new provincial rules allowing photo radar in community safe zones could be applied to the Red Hill. It should be noted that photo radar was used on provincial highways in the 1990s but was later scrapped in the face of driver outrage. One would hope that these changes would improve the parkway and perhaps reduce the number of accidents, but they will not stop them altogether. There is nothing that can do that. We are all aware of that. You are still going to have drivers that speed despite the possibility of a ticket, drivers that are impaired or distracted or experiencing a medical emergency, accidents caused by cars trying to merge into the parkway, accidents due to poor weather or drivers who do not adjust their driving according to weather conditions, and of course, accidents for which there is no cause or reason that we can discover. All drivers deserve a fair chance and that is what we are asking for. The 2015 study, which I wish to point out is like two years already outdated, suggests that perhaps when all of the recommendations are put in place and then the safety measures are monitored, then maybe the number of collisions may decrease and the barriers may not be needed. That is what the study is suggesting. But how many years will pass before all the recommendations are done and all the evaluations are done? How many more lives will be lost in the meantime? There have already been two more median crossover deaths since the study was done. The study has defined high-tension cable median barrier system as the most appropriate for the Red Hill, but even as a cost-effective measure, putting one barrier down the center of the Red Hill may be more effective in downsizing the crossover accidents or death and be cost-effective to the city, which would be a win-win for everybody. You hear of accidents that result in fatalities and you think, "How awful, how sad for that family and their friends." You never think that one day it might be your family, but then it is. You have no idea what it's like when you get that knock at the door from the police telling you that your loved one is gone. It is then and only then that you know what it really feels like. We know that nothing we say or do can bring our loved ones back. The City of Hamilton, please, we are asking on behalf of everyone traveling the parkway that you at least give them a fighting chance because you do not want to become that family. Put in the barriers, please, before another person is severely injured or killed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Susan. I don't see any questions, so you can take your seat. Thank you. Is Samantha White here yet?
No.
Jacob Lundergan? Is Jacob Lundergan here? Okay.
I want to thank the city staff for accommodating everybody today. I'm going to try not to cry. I met these families about eight months ago, sorry I'm going to cry, and I happen to actually know one of them personally, and I didn't know that I knew them until I met them and they told me, and so I set this up for them. And I apologize if everyone gets upset because it's getting rowdy, but you have to understand, these are families that are experiencing trauma and this is probably reopening a lot of wounds, but give them credit for speaking out because as they've said, people continue to lose their lives. Many of you councilors know I am a staunch physical conservative and very... I come in and scream about the way you spend my tax money, but this is something where I think we should be spending money because this is lives that are being lost. And I watch you guys openly give money for other things that I feel I shouldn't have to pay for that really doesn't do anything to save lives or benefit people. And when you have an issue like this with statistics showing that this could save lives and things need to be put in place, I am asking you to do something. I work downtown and I watch how the bicycle lanes and everything else have safety measures. Sorry again, I just, I didn't realize I'd be so upset talking. You know, we have provisions in place for people on bikes and other things and we have... And we've taken laneways out of roads. You need to understand, people are going to drive. You continually allow development on the mountain. You need to realize at this point, the Red Hill and the Link are too small for the population. We can decrease the speed limit. It's not really going to do anything because, like, people, there's going to be accidents. You can't prevent them from happening. Most of the families here are telling you their children were not intoxicated. They were not distracted. There was nothing they could have done to prevent this. Every time I read a story, it's the first thing, a lot of people like to jump to conclusions that it was, you know, driver's fault, driver's fault. And you have right here today, people saying, you know, and police reports have shown it was not the driver's fault. Nothing could have been done to prevent this. They continually happen. I'm asking you to please put this through to your engineers and ask that something be done. One of the other issues is that we know with LRT coming through, you need to expect a lot of people will be traveling up the Link from the east end to the west end to avoid going down one lane of traffic once that goes in, which means we will have more people there. We will, we will need to expand this highway. And if you can't find money, I'm asking you ask the province for us to expand that highway and have those costs put in with that expense. I really don't know how much more to say, other than that the time that I spent back and forth speaking to these families, that, you know, things can be done. There's no reason after today for you to say, to keep putting this off. I honestly, I'm sorry, like, I, I have points, but it's just, it's really emotional to watch. You know, these families are here because they've continued to speak out and as far as they've gotten is the media. They can continue to talk to the media over and over again, that's not going to do anything. You, you need to put some kind of safety precautions in place. And as far as I'm concerned, as a taxpayer, you know, to spend, you know, $10 million to save lives, what did they say, 11 have been lost in five years or something? You, it's worth it. As a taxpayer, it is worth it to spend several million dollars if it's going to save lives. No parent should have to bury their child. So, I'm asking you today to send this over and have it seriously considered because you can do speed radar, and what's that going to do? You're going to collect money? How many lives is that going to save? If no one is speeding in these accidents, that's done nothing. Cars, we know there's always going to be accidents. They continue to improve them. We've seen airbags have been put in, all kinds of safety measures continue to be put in cars, but there are still accidents, which means we need to do something on the roadways. And as it's showing, if there's issues with the grading and stuff like that, that means, you know, there's another issue on top of that. How is a driver supposed to prevent an issue if it's, you know, on the road? Stuff like this. So, sorry again, like, I'm just so scattered because like, I didn't realize I'd be so emotional standing here. But, again, just thank you for your time. And please seriously, seriously consider getting something done and like sooner than later. We don't need to lose any more lives. So, thank you.
Questions for Sarah? Thank you, Sarah. So, one last time, Samantha White? Or Jacob Lundergan? No? So, as we move forward, I would just like to say, as the Chair of the Committee, thank you for sharing, and thank you for coming here, and thank you for your courage to do this. I want to say that we are sincerely sorry for your personal loss and that as this goes forward, it definitely will be, and your concerns will be addressed by staff and backed through this committee. So, thank you again for coming today. And I know Counselor Ferguson has a motion, so we'll go to that. We need to accept the delegations first, yes? Oh, I'm sorry. There is one more person, CJ McDonald? I'm sorry about that. It got added at the last minute and it was on another piece of paper. Start whenever you're ready.
Good morning. My name's CJ McDonald. I'm not quite as well-spoken as everyone else here, but... Michael Scholler was like a brother to me. And on January 25th, 2017, he lost his life in a crossover accident on the RHVP. He was an amazing brother, friend, and uncle. When he came home after a long week at work, first thing he would do was find his baby niece and give her the biggest hug. The smile on their faces was the best. He would talk to me about all his plans for the future with his girlfriend Sammy and was so proud of the life he had with her. It was reported that substance was, was found in his system, and because of this, he was declared impaired. He may have made a stupid choice. I don't think he was under the influence that day. But people do unfortunately do this. But because of his choice, he is gone and now have to go on living lives without him. And my children have to grow up without their favorite person in the world. I'm not here to argue the fact that there's a high number of drivers that are speeding, texting, distracted, or under the influence. You also have those drivers that do pay attention, do everything right, and are still getting into accidents. What I'm here to discuss is what the City of Hamilton is doing or going to do to keep everyone safe, whether at fault or not. I'll be pulling facts from the 2015 RHVP Safety Analysis Report. Page 48, 9.1.9 states, "The purpose of median barriers is to eliminate crossover outcomes." It doesn't result in fewer collisions, but reduce the severity of the collisions. The CIMA conducted a study, and the outcome was the medians are not required, but because of the history of crossover collisions, the area should be considered. Two types of barriers were found feasible for this area. And now, all drivers should be aware of their surroundings at all times. I will not dispute that fact. A driver in the southbound lane is going to pay attention to all vehicles around him in the southbound lanes. The driver is not necessarily paying attention to the northbound lanes as he is not heading in that direction. He'll be watching the cars merge onto the road, their speed, and changing lanes. The driver will have a quick reaction time to what is going on around him. Same can be said for the cars in the northbound lanes. If barriers were in place, once the accident has started, the other drivers traveling in the same direction can react. The vehicle will bounce off the barrier, and there will be that chance of a possibility, of a possible collision, but the severity will not always result in fatality. Drivers may be injured to an extent, a damaged car, but that is all. With no barriers in place, that vehicle has lost, that vehicle has lost control, will go into the median and right into the opposing lane. That driver has no time to react as they had no idea what was going on around them. Both drivers deserve a fighting chance. Their families deserve to have them around. Mr. Hildebrand states that along with causing more collisions, there is also the trade-offs, one being maintenance costs of continually fixing barriers that are damaged. My question to you is, what is more important, spending money to fix a barrier or have another family lose a loved one? What if it was your family and your loved one that was lost in a crossover accident? I think that answer is pretty simple. Since December 2015, Mr. Marula has been wanting to reduce speeds to 80 kilometers an hour to get, to get photo radar in place in hopes that the road becomes safer. What is taking so long? I have to agree with Counselor Lloyd Ferguson's comment where he states, "We are not getting compliance at 90. How are we going to get it at 80?" No matter what you are always, no matter what you do, you are always going to have those drivers that speed that are in such a hurry, they are willing to risk their lives and others' lives. Photo radar is good for Hamilton as it puts money, more money into the city. But you're always going to have some drivers that continue to speed whether they have received a ticket or not. Quoting Mr. Marula from a newspaper article dated August 16th, 2017, "Everyone recognizes that there are issues with both roads, and I think everyone recognizes it has nothing to do with infrastructure design and everything to do with speed." Yeah, in that same article, it says that the consultant the City of Hamilton hired for the 2015 study recommended about $10 million in fixes the long, over the long term to make the road safer. The city does in fact know there is something wrong with the design. The 2015 Safety Analysis Report is over 60 pages long going over all these flaws. Section 9, pages 45 to 49, point out the safety measures that can be taken to make the road safer. From merging signs, cable medians, bigger signage, and better markings on the road, just to name a few. It was said by someone that they would like to dispel the myths and focus on new priorities. I suggest council focus on this priority as the number of collisions and accidents just keeps rising on these roadways. Studies have shown this, sorry, studies have shown this and will keep showing this, no matter what engineer or company you call in to conduct the study. Roads are never going to be 100% safe. You'll have those drivers that aren't paying attention or doing the things they aren't supposed to. There is always going to be accidents, no matter what measures you put in place as council members can change the, but as you, but you as council members can change the severity of these accidents depending on what actions you are willing to take and how far you are willing to go to protect your citizens, excuse me, of Hamilton and anyone that drives on these roads. What happened to Michael and all these other young adults cannot be undone. It will not bring them back, and we realize that. We aren't asking for your sympathy or to help comfort or grieve by putting in barriers. What we are asking is that you try and not let this happen to another family.
Thank you, CJ. I don't see any questions, so you're welcome to take your seat. Thank you. So, uh... Shall we receive the delegations and then have the motion?
I have, I have an all-encompassing motion that will do both.
That receives it as well? Okay, so I will go to... Pardon? I think he was, he's saying, Counselor Ferguson is saying he has an all-encompassing motion. You want to do it separately? Okay, so moved by Counselor Conley, seconded by Counselor Marula, that the delegations in total be received by the committee. All those in favor? Carried. And I will go to Counselor Ferguson for his motion.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to move that the delegations listed as items 6.2A through G must be received, and the comments refer to staff for consideration as part of the report coming forward about the Link and the Red Hill Valley Parkway. And if I have, if I can, give a second of that, I'd like to ask staff a question. Just so you can, Martin, when, this report's coming in December. I know it was in the works before, but I believe you had about an all-encompassing report on the safety measures and including the barriers coming back. Is it the December Public Works Meeting?
Through the chair, we're targeting December 4th for Public Works Committee, but the list of items is growing. So, we're still hopeful we'll get it to December 4th.
Okay, and, and that'll be reviewed with engineering staff also at that time?
Gary says yes. Thank you.
Thank you. That's my motion manager.
Thank you, and it's seconded by Counselor Marula. I have a question from Counselor Conley.
I'm not asking for a report today, obviously, because it's coming in December apparently, but I, I just want to have some questions. Jersey barriers or high-tension cable, what would be the preferred? Or would both of them work? Just me wanting to know.
Through the chair. Both have different impacts. Median barriers, or sorry, Jersey barriers tend to throw the car back into the lane it came from. The other barriers tend to absorb some of the shock. But we would have to determine which is the best location first and then type of barrier to mitigate any kind of serious collisions.
Thank you, because we have both on the, on the, both expressways, right? We have Jersey barriers and we have high-tension cable barriers. We don't have high-tension cable barriers? What is the steel ones with cables on?
Through the chair, we have, we have guide rail and we have Jersey barrier. We don't have any of the high-tension cable at this time.
That's different than the high-tension.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I want to get that clear. And, well, one thing has always bothered me on this, and I don't think there's one problem. I think there could be several solutions. Well, one is lighting. It's really, really dark in parts of that highway. And I think we should look at, as part of the report, would lighting help? And, and obviously, we need costs on anything we're going to do, but I think lighting... I've gone up there nights and it's really dark. Maybe my sight's not the best, but I've had a lot of people say to me, "Doug, can we get some lights up there?" I mean, I'm talking probably more on the Red Hill Valley Expressway, but I'm sure the concern is on the Link too. So, I, I just want this report to be comprehensive and not just, not just pick on or write down what people said and answer their question, but answer as many questions as we can so we have a full and complete report. Because, you know, we've done a safety report, and a lot of those things have been done. Bigger signs and more lighting. Nah, no lighting. What else do we do there? We did signs and I think those eye, cat's eyes are going in and other things to help. But we haven't done a major. I think we spent 1. something million dollars or our spending on that. But it does need another look at, and I don't think it's something we can look at once and say, "That's it." This has to be something like every two years, we should be reviewing that, that road to see what's working, what's not working, and continue on. You know, we had a vote three years ago on expanding it to six lanes, and then she got shot down 17 to 1. So, there's not much want in expanding it to six lanes, which I think would help a lot because of all the expansion going on on the mountain. The cars going up there are increasing every single day, and the more cars, the more potential for accidents. We have a lot of problems here, but I'm looking forward to the report. Thank you for allowing me to speak to it.
Thank you, Counselor Conley. Counselor, Counselor Marula?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just on those two issues, so that we have a full understanding. Through you, to Gary, with respect to the report that has already been completed, the lighting issue did come up, and clearly, it was related to the construction of the road itself and the environmental assessment in which dictated the level of lighting. So, it wasn't really a discretionary decision of council or the City of Hamilton, but one that was negotiated from the, through the EA process. Can you elaborate on that, please?
Through you, Madam Chair. That, you have that correct. It was a, it was a constraint under our approval process that dictated the level of, the current level of lighting, which is the decision point lighting at the entrance and exit ramps.
Okay, so it's important to recognize that if we were to, it's not as easy as just putting more lighting there. What we would be required to do legally is actually amend the, the actual environmental assessment. Can you elaborate on that process?
Through you, Madam Chair. That's, that's correct. It would take a reopening of the EA and, and an amendment to, as well as the requisite studies to, to support that in terms of the impact on the environment for the, for additional lighting in the valley.
Because that's an important distinction, and the complexity of that needs to be fully comprehended. Also, with respect to the expansion issue, at present, if we were to increase capacity both on the 403 end as well as the QEW end, we would be creating a crisis and bottlenecks. Can you elaborate on that? And the reason why we can't expand the road, first for a number of reasons aside, but more importantly, even if we were to, we in essence would be creating more of a problem rather than solving a problem as a result of the province not, not having any plans of expanding or increasing capacity onto the 403 and the QEW.
Thank you, Counselor Marula. I'll, through the chair, if you'll allow, I'll take that question. So, when we reported sometime earlier this year on the expansion, we highlighted that there was basically a bottleneck or a narrowing at both the Queen Elizabeth Way interchanges as well as at the 403 interchanges. Subsequent to that, late last year, council through the mayor asked the province, the MTO, about widening. And we received a letter, I think it might have been April, March or April, that, in which the MTO stated that they're beginning the process to widen the 403 and the Queen Elizabeth Way by a lane in each direction. They state it's in their five-year plan, but they have to do all their requisite studies and EA's first. So, I suggest, even if they get rolling now, it'll, it'll be a few years before they get to construction. But at least the MTO is... But at least the MTO has committed themselves to some sort of widenings at those locations. But simply widening our facility will not allow any further capacity through to the, at the terminal ends of our, of our.
It would in essence be more of a problem than solve the problem, was the point.
True story.
True story. Okay. And, and lastly, with respect to the percentage, the percentage, we had a report that, that the Hamilton Police Service was kind enough to, to share with us. Out of all the accidents and the fatalities, there was a percentage given, and I believe it was over 80%, that was related to driver behavior and/or speed. Can you elaborate on that study?
Unfortunately, through the chair, unfortunately, I don't have that here with me today. Simply by recollection, there was a significant number of collisions involved people doing things they shouldn't do, whether it was speeding or texting or a myriad of activities that are best left not in your vehicle. I could get that data back out to you if you wish, Counselor.
Yeah, I think it's important because it should be part of the discussion. And I want to thank all the speakers as well, Madam Chair. The courage displayed here, I think is something that we should all applaud and encourage, their engagement. And I, I know I'm speaking on behalf of everyone I've spoken to on council, everyone is looking for a solution, and that's what we're, we're diligent to try to find, and I want to commend staff too, because they've been, on this particular issue, I don't know how many motions and reports and, and studies we've asked them to do and we will continue to do, and they, they understand the importance of it as well. So, I appreciate their effort. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson?
Thanks, Madam Chair. So, Martin, for the families that are here and that spoke, and we're here to support the ones that spoke, just so that they're clear, on December the 4th, part of your comprehensive report, because the main thing they want to hear is that the barrier recommendations and options will be part of your report. Madam Chair, through you to Martin, please, manager of traffic operations.
Through the chair, that is correct.
And secondly, Martin, if cost is an issue through our red light camera program, which I've been a supporter of ever since its inception, about 15 years ago, it's been a program that has raised money and has also first and foremost provided safety at our intersections, more so than it did before the red light camera program was installed, but also it's raised revenue, which doesn't impact taxpayers at all, it's for those that are running red lights. My understanding is we still have a few million dollars in reserve in that program roughly. Do you know how much is left as a balance right now, Madam Chair? Through you to Martin.
I, through the chair, I can't recollect. It's something in the neighborhood of 6.5 million.
Your memory and mine is about the same. So, just for the folks up there, if they're wondering about potential cause, whatever the decision might end up being on December 4th, especially for the area that they're advocating for of barriers, that there is money in the red light camera reserve that we've used before for other traffic safety measures, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further questions for staff. Then we'll call the question. So moved by Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Marula. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you. At this point, we were going to be discussing moving item 8.1 forward. Counselor Marula, moved by Counselor Marula, seconded by Counselor Jackson. All those in favor?
Carried.
And now, I think that we will need to move the in-camera session forward that goes with 8.1. Moved by Counselor Marula, seconded by Counselor Ferguson. Counselor Jackson?
Can I just, Madam Chair, can I just ask, is there anyone that's in the gallery here for the aviary issue? Okay. I'm only asking, Madam Chair, because you may wish to explain to them what the procedure is that we may be embarking upon, just so that they don't get discouraged or lose interest. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I will definitely do that. And I believe that Counselor Johnson was hoping that he could be here, but he had another, he has another meeting, and I'm just not sure when. And so, it was, it was a request from him that we move it forward. So, just so you know, we will be going in camera now, and so you will have to leave the gallery. And then when the white light, in other words, when the, the fogging of the windows goes away and the white noise turns off, you will be able to come back, and then we'll deal with item 8.1, which is the report on the aviary. Okay? All right, so, I need to read the in-camera section. Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, yes, can we get your hands to speak at that point?
I can't hear you.
So, maybe I have a chance to speak when we're ready to come back?
Well, we, we don't have any delegations on record for you, and so there were no requests for delegations. And so, okay, so I have a motion to allow them to speak when they come back, seconded, moved by Counselor Marula, seconded by Counselor Ferguson. All those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. So, the answer to your question is yes, when you come back, you will be able to come to the podium and say your piece. Okay? All right.
Madam Chair, should they not be speaking now?
No, after we come back and deal with item 8.1. So, we're moving into camera first, and then we'll be dealing with 8.1. May please have a motion to move into closed session respecting item 12.1, which is the in-camera section for 8.1. Report LS 17033 respecting the aviary at 18 Oak Knoll Drive in Churchill Park pursuant to section 8.1 subsection F of the city's procedural bylaw 14-300 and section 239-2 subsection F of the Ontario Municipal Act 2001 as amended. As the subject member pertains to the receiving of advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, I now ask the public and any staff who are not required to be in this closed-session meeting to please exit the chambers, taking all of your personal belongings with you. Members of the public will be invited to return to hear any further deliberations upon committee reconvening in open session as indicated by the removal of the frosting on the windows and the elimination of the white noise. The committee will, in the event we are in closed session for more than 30 minutes, wait up to five minutes upon reconvening in open session before proceeding with the meeting in order to provide members of the public and the media time to return to the meeting room. Did I get a mover and a seconder for Churchill Park? There's also a private and confidential report, which we've just dealt with, and I just got to work my way through this roadmap differently. So, I need a motion to receive 12.1, which is the in-camera report. Moved by Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor Jackson. All those in favor?
Carried.
Thank you. And now we move to 8.1, which is the report on the aviary. What is the wish of the committee? May I have a motion to approve 8.1? I just thought I'd get it started. I know everybody was just sitting there. So, we're going to hear the delegations. We've moved to approve the delegations. So, Caitlin, is it Smith or Smythe?
Uh, Smythe.
Caitlin Smythe, would you come forward to the podium, please?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, point of order. Are we, do we know how many officially wish to speak?
Two.
Two do? Okay, thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Both can come up at the same time?
No, go ahead, Caitlin. What's that?
Both at the same time or just one up?
Well, do you both have separate things to say?
Okay, do I really want to do that as well?
If you're, if they're just supporting you, then they can come at the same time. If they have something separate to say, then they might as well wait.
Uh, it's, it's all along the same lines. We, yeah.
Okay.
I, I mean, it was a little bit short notice, but, yeah.
Okay. And so, are you, is it Doria? Dana?
Daria.
Daria. I'm sorry. Daria. Okay. Okay, so this is Caitlin and Daria. Caitlin, go ahead when you're ready.
Uh, is it, oh, okay. So, hello, everyone. First, we want to thank you all for letting us speak on such short notice. This is a very important issue to us, to volunteers that have dedicated thousands of hours every year to care for these birds. We are here today because a proposal was made aware to us late Friday night. We had discussed this with the city on Wednesday, but was under the impression that this had already been a proposal that was passed and set in stone. Furthermore, reading the proposal, we have several points of disagreement with how it was written and feel it does not accurately reflect what has been going on the aviary. And the most important point is that it's not been made with the consultation of the members at the aviary. Our simple request today is for that this proposal to be tabled until a new proposal can be made with the input of the members of the Friends of the Aviary who have cared for these birds for 25 years and intend to care for them for many, many more years into the future. Our, our requests are, you know, unreasonable. They're not out there. We're not demanding you pay for a new building. We're not demanding that you pay us as staff. All we would like to do is to remain caretakers for these birds in the intermittent time while we raise funds and awareness to build ourselves a new aviary. And we would like to discuss the, you know, the, the points about the agreement between the city and the aviary in further detail. Oh, oh, okay. One, one thing about the report that I, I would like to mention is that it mentions that the city's been required to, first, first of all, the report itself is that the city will work with animal services and the volunteers to find temporary homes among the community for the birds, foster homes, and give us the aviary three years to come up with a private aviary. If in those three years, those birds would be permanently, you know, surrendered to those homes and, you know, the aviary would be done. Our proposal for change would start with the fact that we would be able to take care of the birds and we would keep them together during this point of time. This is because birds are very social animals. They've been in this flock for over 25 years. They have a very consistent volunteer base, and we can take care of them. There has been some internal dispute, which we've been working very hard at attempting to resolve. The only thing we need to resolve it would be recognition from the city as the new official board, and then we can work towards these issues. Now, the OSPCA has mentioned that, or has filed two reports of non-compliance with the city in regards to the mice levels at the aviary and the lack of lighting. Now, I was there when they came in in April to, and they commented on the same things. This, I, we don't want to get too much into the issues, the internal issues of the aviary, but this is, you know, could be traced solidly back to the previous administration. We had recognized this much earlier in the year before these reports had ever come out or the OSPCA, OSPCA had ever investigated, and we have been trying our very best as volunteers who care for the lives of these birds, as they have no other resources to act out to, to resolve these issues. Unfortunately, the previous board had been resistant. We have not been able to move forward, so we took recognition in that and elected new members legally to the board. Now, we have not been able to move forward with fixing these, this mouse issue. This mouse issue arose due to the previous board stating that they did not want to put poison down because they felt bad about killing the mice, and they've been saying this for the two years I've been here. The mice have never been a problem to this extent. As well for the lighting, we have had proper spectrum lighting for the birds before, but they need for, be replaced, and the previous board had also been talking about replacing those lights for a very long time, but did not act on it. We as volunteers realize this, and we care for these birds. We don't go in because it's fun. We go in because these birds have no one else to rely upon, and we fully believe, we fully have confidence in ourselves that we can supply these birds with the necessities of life, with all the love and care that they need, and build them a forever home, which matches what they deserve. We just need time to draft a proposal in consultation with the Friends of the Aviary and the city that would be best in the interest of the birds and taking into consideration what has happened over the past few years at the aviary from the volunteers' perspective on where the birds' care has gone, has failed, and how the city can work together in a very moderate, mild way to allow us to go ahead and take these necessary steps we know to take care of the birds.
So, I, I'm going to veer a little bit from the usual, and I'm assuming you're finished. Yes?
Those were my main points. I mean, there's other issues that are brought up in the OSPCA report that I can talk about at length for a very long time, but I would like to postpone that until our meeting with the city to redraft a new proposal, as I don't know how much time I have left in my taking.
You don't? You have used your five minutes.
Yes, which is, yeah.
Okay. So, Counselor Johnson has to go to another meeting, and he would like to just say something quickly? So, if I could let him just have a minute to speak, and then counselors can ask questions.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I, I do apologize. I'm the chair of the Emergency and Community Services Committee, and we have our agenda review meeting starting right now, so I'm going to scoot to that. That's not a deep problem, because I'm not a voting member of this committee, so I won't be missing an opportunity to vote because I don't have one. The primary thing I wanted to say, Madam Chair, is a great big thank you to the volunteers who've come forward. In my, in my several months of learning more about the aviary than I ever knew before, a few things have become clear to me, and one of the most important among those things is the love that, I've seen the love that the volunteers have for the birds, and I'd like to thank them for all their stewardship, and I know that their, their stewardship of animals in the city will be ongoing. Whatever happens with the aviary file, and I don't think the outcome is quite clear yet, I know that that love will endure and brings a lot of enrichment to the city, and so I'd like to thank them for provoking a good conversation about animal welfare and our relationship with animals as citizens. It's a very important topic to think about, and the aviary file has let us all do that. And they've, and the volunteers have provided a beautiful resource for the community for many years. When I was a teenager in the 90s, my grandmother lived with us in Westdale in her old age, and frequently, in her wheelchair, she and I would go to the aviary. And I have beautiful memories of the aviary, and I identify with all the citizens who are sad to see the aviary hitting a major bump in the road right now. I've, I've met with six of the leading volunteers, and I've met with staff, and in the in-camera meeting that we just had, I shared my most basic concerns, which are legal and ethical concerns around animal welfare, law compliance, and I know that this committee is going to make the right decision and that all of you are going to continue working for animal welfare. So, those are things that encourage me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson?
Well, I was going to wait till the second delegation was finished.
Oh, I'm sorry.
See you later.
Daria?
Madam Chairman, counselors, thank you for letting us speak so last minute. I want to mention that the, the group of volunteers that we've been working with, that I've been working with personally, is an extremely talented group of people and fully capable of making the aviary something that the city can be proud of. It can be a tourist attraction. It, it can be a lot of things, and it can be an educational tool for people in the city. It's, it's something that we need to build up rather than break down, and I believe that the Friends of the Aviary nonprofit organization has not been given the chance that they need in order to make this aviary what it could be. And I'm, I'm going to repeat a little bit of what Caitlin said, but only because I think it's so important, because the current state of the aviary, there are issues which are listed in the OSPCA report. These issues are fixable, but the, the Friends of the Aviary have not been given a chance to fix them. Part of the issue is that the, the, the city has not consulted with the organization to the extent that I believe would have allowed us to resolve the issues. A new board of directors has been elected on July 31st, and the new board of directors is pretty much spinning its wheels in place because we have not been given the chance to resolve these issues, because the former board of directors has continued to work with the city and the city has continued to enable them. And I believe that if, if given a chance, this new board of directors can bring the aviary to a state where it is manageable or house the birds together in a temporary facility until we can build an aviary that will bring to the city something that you can be proud of, something that will be both a tourist attraction and educational tool, for example, like the, the Bird Kingdom in Niagara, if you think along those lines. With the city's support, we can make this something much better. So, the, the current report that came out was very last minute, not with consultation of the board of directors of the Friends of the Aviary, and we are asking today that you give us more time, that you consult with the board of the directors of the Friends of the Aviary, and work together rather than against us in order to give these birds what they need and to bring something great to the city. Thank you.
And if I could just say, sorry, one more thing. We all recognize- We all recognize that that building needs to go. It was meant for two years and it's lasted us 25 years. There's no question about that. There's also no question about the state. But we can fix them. We can find temporary locations. With all the birds to be housed together, it has been done in the past and we can absolutely, with the sheer amount of support and outpouring from the community, we used to have all the food from the aviary donated for free. We used to have vets come down twice a year for free from Guelph to check all the birds. We've had offers from professional advertisers and marketers and fundraisers to donate their time and energy towards helping the aviary. We've had offers for certified electricians to come in and take a look at the issues going on at the aviary. There is, I would not be here if I did not think that the potential to build the birds a home, that they deserve, I would not be here, like, I wouldn't be here if I didn't think that was possible and very likely. And I hope you can realize that there's a lot of resources in the community that have not been accessed in the previous few years that can be accessed again. And we are fully willing and already starting to begin to access those resources. And we would simply, again, like to ask you that this is deferred until we can consult with the city on the plan moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thank you Caitlin and Daria for coming forward on behalf of the other volunteers here at the 11th hour here. So I'm sympathetic and I think I've written back to a number of you over the weekend. I'm sympathetic and, and I'm open-minded to buying you some more time. But here's three very, here's three conundrums, three very blunt questions I need to ask you two, if you two could answer please, that's kind of looming over this matter and why I believe staff have, in their best wisdom and advice, made the recommendation they have. So please, to the best of your ability, here's the three conundrums. Number one, two different groups. Is there, if, if we were to table this matter for a period of time, and it cannot be an indefinite period of time? Can the two groups somehow find some consensus, some collaboration and cooperation? Or who will the city staff then be dealing with, Madam Chair? Through you, either Caitlin or Daria.
Yep. I think that that's a misunderstanding because in fact, there really aren't two groups or shouldn't be because the issue is who is the Board of Directors of the nonprofit organization? We have the legal documentation actually right here to prove that we are the Board of Directors. Some members who are part of the former Board of Directors insist that this is not a legal document. They insist that we cannot function as a Board of Directors for whatever reasons they list and we rightfully disagree. Such disputes have occurred in other organizations in the past. It is not uncommon for a former Board of Directors to not relinquish their rights and responsibilities. And I believe that this is what's happening right now and I hope that the city will support us in moving forward with the new duly-elected Board of Directors.
Okay. Thanks, Daria. Caitlin, did you want to add anything on that?
I would like to add that, oh, I just lost my train of thought. Hold on, sorry.
About the new versus the old Board of Directors?
Yes, absolutely. We have done our best to reach out to the old Board of Directors in the past to work with them in a very polite and formal and professional manner. They have not been cooperative. They've been sending, you know, kind of threatening emails. We will do, again, our best. If you require us to work together in order to move this forward, we will do our absolute best to meet with them and to collaborate them and say, you know, set aside your differences. We're going to focus on keeping, taking care of these birds the way we know that we need to take care of them. We can't promise, we can't tell the future on whether that will result in, you know, one group coming forward essentially for this issue or not, but we will do everything in our ability if that is what you require for us to come forward.
Caitlin, that, I mean, again, I'm not sure where the committee stands, but if we were to buy you some more time, that's conundrum number one, in my opinion. That would certainly be more advantageous and beneficial, even the outreach to the former Board of Directors, to try to at least have them not work against you. If you're telling me you have, based on whatever approval, executive approval, lawyer's approval, you have this new not-for-profit that has, has since been set up. Second conundrum that staff have rightly pointed out is the two orders from the OSPCA. I used to, I used to be with our, on our SPCA board for 10 years from the mid 90s to 2006 up on Dartnell Road, so we were closely with the provincial body. So that's kind of looming and staff are concerned that to buy you some more time by tabling, we've got two orders, I believe by Christmas time, we're dealing with. So, Madam Chair, through you to Caitlin or Daria, what's the solution to that based on your request to table?
Sorry, the solution to solve these issues by Christmas time?
No. But the orders that are pending from the OSPCA, we could give you all the time in the world, but it could end up being that the city potentially will be on the hook to resolve those two orders. And what is your, how are you going to provide input and solutions to the OSPCA's orders, Madam Chair? Through you.
Yes. Well, we can fix the light issue tomorrow. We can go out and buy lights. We've had the lights, you know, they're there. We've had them before. That's not an issue. And we can consult with the OSPCA to make all efforts in order to reduce the mice population as to what they recommend. At the same time, we are not saying that we want to necessarily stay at this building for longer than the OSPCA has recommended and what the current agreement with the city is. We recognize that that building, you know, is very old, as I had mentioned before, and that the mice problem is very difficult because it's been built up for so long. Again, we would love to communicate with the OSPCA and work with them very closely to see what they would like to see in terms, if we were to table this issue, not for long, we're not asking for long, but just to consult with the Friends of the Aviary for an official proposal as to what they would require to see so that the city will not become liable and what we can do in terms of that. And if there isn't a solution in that point, then we will, I mean, there's no point. We don't want the city to be liable for the birds and we will do everything in our power to work with the city so that neither the city is liable nor the birds are suffering.
I appreciate you. That's a very important comment, Caitlin, that you said at the end there, recognizing our city staff are doing their very best in due diligence. You love the birds. You, the FOT has been there in some fashion or form for 25 years, caring for these wonderful creatures. Our staff are not only trying to support that, but also they've got a taxpayer and the corporate interest to be concerned about as well. So I appreciate your last comment there, that you would try to be part of a solution, but recognizing if it's not possible, then we might have to go with the way the city is recommending. Daria, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I want to add to that. Everything Caitlin said, I completely agree. The issues can, can be solved. We haven't been given a chance. And there's multiple possible solutions. We can work with the SPCA to resolve the specific items which they have listed as concern. We can also look for a new temporary, a temporary new building to house all the birds while the new aviary is, while we raise funds and build a new aviary. We have had, the community, the outpouring from community has been great. And there are potential solutions for temporary housing places for the birds without having to find individual foster homes for them. And we would, we would like to bring a new proposal to the council where we would list all of these things and where we would be able to talk about deadlines. You mentioned Christmas as a deadline by the SPCA. We can have a deadline in advance of Christmas, in advance of the SPCA deadline, where the SPCA can come in and, and assess whether there has been improvement or if we, if we have a new facility, they can assess that. We are very willing to work with the SPCA and with the city to resolve these.
And I would just like to add another comment. Yeah, you know, we haven't been contacted by the city or the OSPCA about their two orders of noncompliance and we would be, we, we want to care for the birds. We want them to meet the OSPCA standards and we will be looking immediately for a new temporary building to house those birds in because we recognize this building, you know, even no matter how many efforts we put into it, it is falling apart. It was meant for two years. It's, it's not been suitable for the birds. It's not been a, you know, the best place it could be for the birds for a very long time. And we really want to look at fixing that as best as we can and complying with the city and the OSPCA and in the interest of the birds.
Thank you, Caitlin and Daria. The third conundrum, Caitlin and Daria, it dovetails into what you just said there and that is that in the background report, the public report on page three, staff said about seven years ago, it would have costed potentially about 300 grand to do some basic repairs to the existing facility there. And today, if facilities were to meet proper standards with design, approvals, construction, it could be anywhere from 1.5 million to $2 million, which obviously is very, very significant to the local tax levy. So, Madam Chair, through you to Caitlin or Daria for a comment on that too, please.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, is this talking about renovating the existing building or building a completely new aviary?
If I could ask, would you allow me the light of two, Madam Chair, just to get that clarity from our manager of forestry, Leanne, please? Just on that point, please, Leanne.
In response through the chair, that is a calculation that would be a new facility that's appropriate as an aviary as opposed to a converted home.
So just to clarify further, Leanne, I know, Madam Chair, we normally do delegations, but this is just to clarify the cost point, if you allow me further, please. So, Leanne, is the 320,000 reference then, is that just for the basic repairs of the existing? Through you, Madam Chair.
In response through the chair, that was a calculation that was done for repairs on the existing facility in 2010, $2,010.
Okay. Thank you, Leanne. Back to the delegation. Caitlin, Daria, based on what you've heard?
Pardon? Oh, sorry. Yeah. To that, I mean, I would, I would say that I am not knowledgeable in terms of, you know, the appraisal and costing of building a new building. That number seems extremely high to my, my, you know, initial, my initial reaction to that number is that it isn't accurate and that I don't know if that includes the city aiding in building or if it would be us building it on its own. I honestly can't give you a professional opinion on whether that is accurate or not. I would say, based on my own opinion, that that isn't accurate and even in the meantime, we will be doing our best to access other, you know, people to consult in the community that would be willing to consult and give us a second opinion on what we are able to do. And also, you know, there's a lot of people who are willing to donate to these birds. So we may be able to find partnerships to donate, maybe an established facility and, you know, modify that. We can look out for outreach, outreach to materials, to building costs, to, you know, building and labor costs. Sorry, I'm a little bit rambling right now, but yeah, it's true. Like, I can't determine what the, how accurate that cost is right now and I don't think any of us can accurately say that. It's, it's truly $2 million to build a new aviary at this point of time. And at this point in time, it's not something we can fix right now. It's not in the immediacy of delaying this. You know, the original agreement can still exist. It'll be, you know, three, four years for us to build a new aviary. And if it becomes apparent that it's going to be $2 million, we can't afford it. It's not going to be suitable for the birds and we can still go out to community and find them suitable forever homes.
So Caitlin, yes, Daria, did you want to quickly, please? And then I'm just going to wrap up, Madam Chair. Thanks for your indulgence.
That number does seem really high, 1.5 to 2 million, but it's not impossible with given time. We're talking about a timeline right now. We were not consulted at all. So for the short term, we can make, we can find a livable place for the birds. In the long term, we would like to build that aviary and it may cost 1.5 to 2 million dollars. But considering the amount of support we've had, I don't think it's impossible to reach that amount of money in donations and build a new aviary within a given timeline.
Okay.
And sorry, just very quickly, also in accessing grants and partnering with possibly MacMass University, Guelph University, there's so many resources out there that we have to access. Not to mention there's the Ward One money that can be donated. I think Ada mentioned it was 1.5 million per year and, you know, and I'd also like to get a second opinion on that to be truthful. Sorry, yeah.
So listen, I, I really admire the enthusiasm of both you on behalf of the volunteers, both here and many volunteers that are beyond within the city. So bottom line, the OSPCA two orders are looming. I think there's a three-month window and you say you're willing to talk to them as well, work with our city staff. We can't give you beyond that. I'm just even thinking of two to four weeks even to allow your conversation to continue with a tabling and reporting back here, Madam Chair, sometime in, let's say, mid-November, late-November at the very latest. So, Madam Chair, through you to the ladies here, can you do something or at least attempt to do something in that period of time?
Oh, absolutely. I was imagining a much shorter period of time in which discussion because we weren't, I mean, we weren't imagined, we have not gone together to write our own proposal, but from our discussions we've had, we're not imagining something far out from what the city is doing. We think our suggestions and to changes are very reasonable. And if you gave us that timeline, like, that's a lot longer than we were thinking of and we would appreciate it, but yeah, it would be, yeah.
Thank you, Caitlin. Thanks, Daria. Madam Chair, at the appropriate time, I would then move a motion to table 8.1 with an upset limit of up to four weeks maximum from this moment to have the volunteers with staff report back or lift the tabling at that time. If it can be done in a week or two at the next Public Works meeting, Madam Chair, that's bonus, but I would just say an upset limit of a month. And that still falls within the OSPCA order timeframe to my knowledge. Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So can we, can I have a motion to receive the delegations, both of them? Counselor Carley, seconded by Counselor Collins, all those in favor?
Carrie.
Carrie, thank you. And now, Counselor Jackson, your motion?
Before I put my motion, Madam Chair, now to staff, Manager Sealy from Public Works, please, you've heard everything, you know what my, my desire, my preference would be, not to procrastinate, but you've heard if, you know, the sincerity of the volunteers that spoke caught off guard to some degree, is a two to four-week timeframe out of the order, is that going to cause you any logistical hardship? Madam Chair, through you to Leanne or whoever wants to answer that then, please. The general manager of Public Works, Dan McKinnon, then?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think tabling, it shouldn't be a problem, but I think Nicole may want to add something to the conversation here.
Thank you, Dan. City Solicitor, Latte?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. So my only comment would be through you to the counselor, would be to have some mechanism of addressing the governance issues in terms of the dispute between the groups which the counselor identified. I think part of that would be requesting that they do resolve that through their own legal opinion because frankly, I can't give them any advice on whether they are or not a legitimate entity. So I think one of the key aspects to any further discussions would be them obtaining that legal advice for themselves and then we can move on that basis and I think give council and committee a further update and the end of the tabling period.
Thanks so much, City Solicitor. So, Madam Chair, I think the essence, if I've captured it with the three challenges, if you will, the Board of Governance issue in terms of the collaboration hopefully between the two groups, the new group that's, they say they're now officially not-for-profit, bringing hopefully onboard the others, that's challenge one. In this two to four-week window, I hope committee will give them. Secondly, the, the challenge of the OSPCA orders. And thirdly, the challenge of both short-term and long-term, the financial challenges in front of them. So I would hope that our legislative assistance would capture that within my tabling. And again, an upset limit of one month. Thank you. If I can get a second or four of that, thank you.
So moved by Counselor Jackson, seconded by Counselor Marula. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Carrie.
Carrie, thank you. Any opposed? Carrie, thank you. Okay. So now we are going back to presentations, which is 7.1, a presentation respecting the restructuring of the Transit Division. I call on Debbie Delva-Vado, I never say that right, Director of Transit, to please come forward.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, members of committee. I have a brief presentation for you this morning on the restructuring of the Transit Division. So to ensure that our employees have a line of sight to the city division to be the best place to raise a child and age successfully, we created our aspiration, defined what our purpose is and created goals to get us there. Our aspiration is Transit, your first choice. We defined our purpose, which is to provide customer-focused service that is safe, reliable, and inclusive. We then established our goals to get to Transit being your first choice. And those goals are to consistently provide a customer experience that meets or exceeds the expectations of our current customer base while building on a reputation that attracts new customers, to maintain a transit service and infrastructure that keeps our system in a state of good repair, and to take ownership of a system that increases modal split through growth within current conditions and expansion to accommodate future needs. So why did we restructure the Transit Division? Firstly, we have a responsibility to adapt our services to meet the changing needs of our customers. On an average day, we interact with approximately 50 repair; and to take ownership of a system that increases modal split through growth within current conditions and expansion to accommodate future needs. So, why did we restructure the Transit Division? Firstly, we have a responsibility to adapt our services to meet the changing needs of our customers. On an average day, we interact with approximately 50,000 people. We can be the difference between people getting a leg up or failing. The changing needs and wants of our customers is out of our control, but listening to them and changing the way we respond to their needs and wants is not. We have to place emphasis on better understanding our current customers, knowing who our potential customers are, and evolving to meet their transportation needs. In order to do this, we created a new section called Customer Experience and Innovation. This new section will bring all of our customer service, marketing, and information technology resources together to meet both conventional and specialized transit customer needs. We are aligning ourselves to better deliver on the city's priorities. We want to be the best place to raise a child and age successfully. The community has clearly identified public transportation as a priority to achieving our vision. It's critical, then, for us to structure ourselves to better deliver on this priority. Earlier in 2017, changes were made to the Public Works Department in order to take into account and address the reciprocal nature of work within the department and with other parts of the city, to reduce coordination costs, resolve and reduce redundant management work, to group specialized tasks that require little or no crossover with other parts of the organization, to optimize use of human capital, and establish clear accountability for work. The Public Works, the Public Works leadership team at the director level developed three priorities for the new structure to focus on, which are performance, management, continuous improvement, and internal communications. Aligning ourselves with these principles and priorities puts us in a position to adapt how we manage the constantly-changing landscape of public transportation. Finally, we are planning for our future as an organization. We are seeing and will continue to see an increased rate of employee turnover as long-term employees retire and younger employees explore the variety of opportunities available to them. We must prepare ourselves in all aspects of our business for generations to come. It is critical to our success that we recognize the diversity of our city and the diversity of our residents' transportation needs. The amount of talent, experience, and knowledge that our employees collectively hold is astounding, hundreds, if not thousands, of years' worth of employment with Transit. We need to make sure that we learn from the best of the past to chart our course for the future. So, here's our new structure. We created a new section called Customer Experience and Innovation, which is being led by Dennis Guy. This section is responsible for consolidating both proactive and reactive customer interactions, introducing innovation to address changing customer needs, and investing in attracting new riders, and making the connection between our customers, technology, and our services. Our IT section has been moved from Support Services to the new section. There are no changes to the Fleet and Maintenance Section, which is still being led by Mark Selkirk. Operations is now being led by Mark Williams, who joined HSR back in April. We return the Training Section back to Operations from Support Services. We also consolidated the former Transit Planning and Customer Service Section, which reported to Jim Domes, who retired earlier in the year, and we combined that with the Strategy and Infrastructure Section, which was formerly led by Christine Lee Morris, who just recently retired, and we created the new Transit Planning and Infrastructure Section, now under the leadership of Jason Vanderhyde. Nancy Purser still leads the Support Services Section. As you can see from this new structure, ATS is no longer a section on its own. It's been divided between Customer Experience and Innovation and the Planning and Infrastructure Sections. ATS Customer Service has moved to the Customer Experience and Innovation Section, which allows for the coordination of customer service functions between both specialized and conventional transit, allowing for elimination of duplicate work. The Contract Administration Function of ATS is now part of the Planning and Infrastructure Group. George Brovak is now responsible for special projects, which will include creating and updating all our standard operating procedures for each section, updating rules, regulations, and policies, as well as contingency planning. The new structure is about optimizing the talent we already have onboard, keeping in line with our people and performance plan. I want to note that this was done internally with staff expertise. We didn't hire a consultant, but did this through consultation with the teams who knew best what needed to be done and how they thought we needed to be organized in order to get it done. The new structure is within both our current complement and current budget. Thank you, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Debbie. Counselor Ferguson?
Well, it sounds like a good structure, Debbie, but just one question. I think you, you made it, you answered it in your final comment, there's no change to FTEs, then?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay. Some more questions, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate the new director bringing this forward. I had contacted her a couple of times, and it was just a matter of getting familiar with some of the new faces in her management lineup. I, I like her new structure very much, and understanding the roles and responsibilities below each new manager and with the ones that have continuity as well. So, thank you, Debbie, for bringing that forward. Just to be clear then, Debbie, in the future, then, in dealing with Mark Mendorf and the DARTS organization, did I hear you correctly that Dennis Guy and Jason Vanderhyde, to some degree, between the two of their portfolios, now will be kind of consulting with and working with DARTS? Madam Chair, through you?
Through the chair. So, anything relating to customer service will be under Dennis Guy's area of Customer Experience and Innovation, and then we will have a specific staff member in regards to the administration of the DARTS contract, working with Jason. So, yes, they will work together, but the two individuals will be in the separate sections.
Terrific to know. Thank you, Debbie. Good luck with the new organization. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And that's all the speakers that I have. Moved to receive by Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Marula, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Carried. Thank you, Debbie. We're on motions. Counselor Collins, will you please present your motion respecting MTO digital signage for the Eastport Drive-Lift Bridge?
Yeah, I will, Madam Chairman, and as I noted at council last week, this issue has been forwarded several times to both bureaucracies at the federal and provincial level, and so this is formally asking the city to pursue it on behalf of those people who not only live on the beach but elsewhere, and I would like to just amend it by stating digital signage boards on the QEW and the 403 highways.
Moved by Counselor Collins, seconded by Counselor Marula. Any questions? All those in favor?
Carried.
Carried. Thank you. Item 9.2. Counselor Ferguson, will you please present the motion respecting the Mount Hope Park project on behalf of Counselor Brenda Johnson?
Yes, I'm bringing this forward on behalf of Counselor Johnson. She originally wanted to include the spray pad scope under the existing contractor so to avoid a constructor issue, but they were unable to negotiate a reasonable price, so she's turning it back to the typical procurement now, going it out for separate tender after the work is complete that they're currently working on. So, I'd like to move this on her behalf.
Moved by Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Marula. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carried. Are there any notices of motion? General information on other business, item 11.1. May I please have a motion to approve item 11.1A and B respecting changes to the outstanding business list? Looking for a motion. Counselor Ferguson, moved by Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Conley, all those in favor?
Carried.
Carried.
Motion to adjourn?
Just making sure. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Jackson, all those in favor?
Carried.
Thanks very much.